November 2017, meeting of the Rondiquay zoning board of appeals to order. If everyone would please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get underway, one reminder, tomorrow is election day. Everybody, please go out and vote, no matter how you're voting. Unfortunately, I read that we might expect, since it's not a state election year, and there's nobody running for governor, and there's nobody running for president, that we might have less than 40% voter turnout, which is a terrible reflection on democracy. Also, remember that there's questions on the back of the ballot as well. So make sure you go and exercise the right for which people have given their lives to protect. Couple of administrative details. The fire exit is located to your left. In the event of a fire, you will be notified by an announcement. If so notified, please move in a calm and orderly fashion to the exit. Do not use the elevator. Use either the north or the south stairs to leave the building. The meetings are being recorded by our secretary, Michelle, for the purpose of a record and minutes, so please identify yourself each time that you come to the podium and speak into the microphone. We follow the items on the agenda in the order that they appear. There are extra copies of the agenda on the table next to the door. Once the case has been called, the applicant or their representative should come to the podium, identify themselves, state their address, then pause a moment, raise their right hand, be sworn, and then present their case. During the presentation of the applicant's case, the board may have comments or questions. And once the applicant has addressed any concerns raised by the board and presented their case, we will open the case to public input. Anyone wishing to address the board regarding the application can come to the podium and identify themselves along with their address and direct their comments or questions to the board, not to the applicant. There are three categories of public input. The first is those who wish to speak in favor of the application. The second is those who wish to speak in opposition to the application. And then the third category are those who aren't for or against the application but want to talk to us about something that relates to the application, or the circumstances surrounding it, or just want to talk to us in general. For each category, when we ask for the input, if those who wish to address the board would line up on the left side of the room, that would be helpful. Also, remember that comments and questions get addressed to the board, not to the applicant. Once all the public input has been completed, we'll give the applicant the opportunity to return to the podium and address whatever may have come up during the public input portion that they wish to address. It's not required, but they have the opportunity to do that, after which the case is closed to any further public input. We'll continue on to the next case, and when we complete the agenda, we'll take a short break. After we return from the break, we will then deliberate on the cases in the order that they appear on the agenda and for which the applicants remain present. So if the applicant who has the first case on the agenda is not present, we'll start up with number two, and we'll work through all the cases for the applicants who have stayed, and then we'll go back to the top and work our way down for the applicants that have left. There's no further input allowed during this portion of the meeting unless the board specifically requests that. And you're welcome to stay, but if you wish to leave, you're welcome to do that as well. And if you're interested in knowing what our decision was on any case, you can either catch us on TV, or you can call the planning and zoning board in the morning after nine o'clock, and they'll be glad to tell you what action the board took. I believe we can start with the first item on our agenda now.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First item on the agenda is case number PB, excuse me, ZB 17011-1. Upon the met of request by David and Diane Coon for an area variance to install a six-foot-high solid wood front yard fence with non-conforming fence type and exceeding maximum permitted height and linear footage on premises 358 Thomas Avenue in an R1 residential district.
Hello. My name is David Coons. I reside at 358 Thomas Ave, Rochester, New York, 14617.
You raise your right hand, Mr. Coons. Do you swear from it everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Do I need to read my statement to the board into the record, or is that...
You can present your case in any manner that you'd like. You can go over what you've submitted. I can assure you that each and every member of the board has read not only your application, but also the emails that were submitted with respect to your application, so...
Okay. Just want to state that I'm here to find out what will be allowed through the proper channels dividing a fence between our properties. If the stockade fence is not appropriate, more decorative fence could be done. There is a stockade fence directly across the street from us between 361 Thomas Ave and 371 Thomas Ave that is approximately 25 feet from the town right-of-way. The fence that I'm proposing would be 100 feet from the town right-of-way. Surveyors did finally show up today, and they restaked the line and put in some pins and some wooden stakes. I did not bring that receipt with me. I can get it to you. Also, it's the Triple Point Surveying Company, and the gentleman I talked to was Andrew Hodge. I should have brought the receipt, but I did not. Anyway, they were there, and they staked out that line. Basically, I want the fence to separate the properties to give a space of safety and to keep the driveways separate there. I encourage the members to stop by if they want the board members to stop by and look at the stakes and see the way the properties are enjoying. Some of the previous owners had tarred an area between the properties. And when the surveyors were there, they did find that the rear part of the fence is on the neighbor's property. I am going to move that over onto my own property. The fence is not going to encroach on the neighbor's property at all.
So Mr. Hodge is going to produce a survey that will show where the actual boundary line between the two properties is in relation to where you'd like to put the fence?
Well, I did that on the application to show that. I just had them come to make sure that where I believe the line was, the line was mathematically, GPS-wise, everything that he just...
But I thought I understood you to say that the back of the fence was on the neighbor's property, and that you found that out today when he was there?
Yes.
All right. So the information that he gave you wasn't entirely consistent with what you had, right?
I didn't have anything with the back of the fence. This is the back corner, the rear part of the lot. The fence that I'm proposing is connecting a chain link fence that ends at my garage and goes across the driveway areas that are connected.
So you're talking about the fence that's the stockade fence at the...
No, it's a chain link fence. Goes down the right side of the property, the back corner. The last 20 feet are a foot over on their property. I'm going to cut the posts and move it over so that it is not on their property.
Oh, okay, well that...
In case that becomes an issue at some point.
That is shown on the survey that you submitted, the 2015 survey.
So that doesn't really have anything to do with the fence variance?
No. I thought, I was confused as to what you were talking about. I apologize. So essentially, what you're interested in doing is covering the connector between the two properties as it appears on the survey?
Yes. I checked with a lawyer. There is no shared driveway privileges or anything in the deed that states that it's shared.
All right. Now, if your neighbor wanted to put up that fence, they'd be able to, correct?
Correct. That would be considered the neighbor's rear yard by definition in our code, and so they would be able to do so with just a building permit and would not need to go to this board.
But because your house is set further back, a variance is needed?
Correct.
And one of the standards for the variance is whether it's the least remedy necessary to alleviate the practical hardship, which is the standard for granting an area variance, which this is. So if you could tell me, explain to us why the fence as you're proposing it is the least restrictive alternative to what's allowed under the code for the fence on your property?
It's probably not the least restrictive. It was where I was, if I had my druthers, that would be what I would prefer. If it's not allowed, I'm not going to be allowed. I'm just trying to ask to see what would be allowed and what is appropriate and what can be put there. The stockade fence would give more privacy and more separation and would be preferable from our side of the fence.
Okay. If there was a halfway point in reference to having a fence come forward to the turnaround and then lowering it to a four-foot fence to the front of the turnaround, is that, I think aesthetically, and I know it affects your yard more than theirs, but it does affect the view driving down Thomas Avenue like there's a big front yard fence.
Right.
So because your house sits so far back, that large of a fence that far forward would look awkward. Maybe not to you, but it would look awkward driving down the road. But you have, and you have such a beautiful front yard.
Thank you.
Again, would an alternative be bringing it, bringing the six-foot to the turnaround or to that, I guess, not the turnaround, but to their garage point, to the back part of their garage, and then lowering it to a four-foot fence, and then stopping that four-foot fence at the approximate corner of their house, the back corner of their house?
That could be an acceptable alternative, yes.
Okay. All right. Just wouldn't be so much big, tall fence all the way down.
Right.
Have you been there long?
Couple of years.
So, because I, we, this house was in front of us to put the garage in years ago. The second garage.
Right, and the pool, I believe, and the fencing that they did, they had gotten permits and variances for all that.
Yeah, the variance was for the garage. That's the one I can remember any.
What's the need to have a fence going across the paved area?
For my own comfort level, I've asked the neighbors not to drive on our property, and it doesn't seem to be happening, so the fence would protect me from having to worry about it or think about it or be aware of it or anything. It would be a nice separation.
Well, it also would, from the road, would make people think that there's some kind of a war going on between the neighbors, which doesn't exactly lend itself to a warm, cozy town atmosphere that we like to have.
I'm not looking for a war. I'm just looking for peace and a separation of the properties.
Well, has there been a problem? I mean, you're indicating driving on the property, I'm not sure exactly what you're referring to about that.
They have been better, but because it's so open, it just is a matter of fact that it's going to get crossed over. Friends that visit them come up our driveway and turn around in our driveway and stuff.
I think I might have done that today. I think I might have done that today, about 4:30. I came down your driveway, and you turned it back up their driveway. That's what you're looking to avoid.
It'd be nice to not have to think about people on my property.
My question is right here. Because it is a common area, how is that maintained as far as sealing and that type of thing? Is it done in conjunction with each other, is alternate years, or how does that work?
They just moved in, after we moved in, I had the driveway sealed the first fall when we were there, and I sealed what I believed was our section of the driveway up to the property line, which is basically what we surveyed.
I have a potentially similar situation where I live, so I'm very interested to see how this gets resolved tonight. Because when you have an area that's got no division, there is no division, it's very easy to back out or make a U-turn or whatever, and that's what you're trying to avoid. And based on some of the responses that came with the request, there's been some negative comments made about this. So I'm very interested to see how this finally gets resolved. I think the, I think the six-foot is probably on the paved part maybe a little overkill, but you just want, you want something to make sure it's your clearly defined spot, your property.
Yes.
Have you, have you considered removing the part of the asphalt that joins the two driveways? And put grass in there and make it a lawn area, then?
I don't think it would keep tires from going over the area there and driving on the property. It'd be a lot of work to dig that up and remove it and plant grass, but that's possible, sure.
I think it'd be a lot less expensive to put a fence in, but...
What about a post at each side of the asphalt area and a chain or a rope stretched between it?
That's a possibility too.
I mean, that would be permitted under the code, wouldn't it?
Actually, no, that would not be a permitted fence type, I don't believe. We typically say it's, I mean, that's more of like a, maybe a, it starts to become an issue of whether it's a landscaping feature, but because it's on pavement and it's on the property boundary line, it needs to be fence, and our code definition says it's got to be, fences are materials that are commercially available as fence, so that we don't end up with sort of ad hoc...
You can't do your makeshift.
Correct. And so, in this instance, I think because of its location, if somebody was doing that kind of feature in their backyard, you know, near a planting area where it was more of a landscape feature, that would be one thing, but because of its location on the boundary line, it would be acting like a fence, and so if it's acting like a fence, it needs to adhere to the fence regulations.
If it walks and talks like a duck, it's a duck.
Correct, correct.
All right. When was the house built?
50s, 1950.
Because I'm looking at the survey, and it would appear from the way the island or the non-paved portion comes back from Thomas Avenue, that the property was developed slightly differently than the way the property line actually is. And I'm wondering how long that's been like that, and, you know, you said you've been there, what, three or four years?
Two years.
Two years, and your neighbor has been there?
Less than that, maybe six months less than that.
All right. So do you know what the history was between the old neighbors?
Nope. The lady in the neighbor's house passed away, and the people we bought from moved to Florida. I didn't, other than him showing me incorrectly where some pins were, I don't, didn't talk to him about why they were connected, or what it meant that they were connected, or how long it had been connected.
Just looking at the tightness of the other driveway, not that it's 100% your concern because it's not your property, but the tightness of them backing out of their garage or them backing out, can be a little tight with it being blocked. My worry is that the fence doesn't get bumped into and start another problem between the two of you.
If it gets bumped into, I'll just fix it.
I'm sorry, can you explain what the objection is that Big Miss Lupi or Mr. Hudson presented about removing the asphalt, making it a grass island? Usually, people don't drive over grass. It's just, they're just kind of not really done, or making it into a depressed area so that if you do drive into it, it's a natural barrier that you don't want to go down. So can you explain to me what your objection is of making a natural barrier versus a six-foot fence?
Just that I don't know that it would be adhered to without an obstruction there, without a barrier there. I don't know that it would not be, continued to be used. I don't have faith in it.
So is your concern controlling the behavior of a neighbor or really providing a natural boundary that allows separation of your property?
Natural boundary would work if a fence is not allowed. I would go for whatever you guys approve. I just would like some kind of separation there and like some security that it's not being violated or driven over.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open the hearing to public input. First group of people we'll hear from are those who would like to speak in favor of the application, if you would come up to the podium. If there's...
I didn't read the play.
No, you're not required to. That's all right. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to the application? Step right up, line up, if there's more than one, line up behind each other over there on the left side.
My name is Mel Rosen Garden. I live at 385 Thomas.
We don't swear the, the only people that get sworn are the applicants. The reason for that is in the past, we have had applicants who have made representations to the board that after we have acted in reliance on those representations, we found that they were not completely accurate and in some instances had absolutely no basis in fact. And, but there was nothing that we were able to do to rectify the fact that we acted upon false information or misleading information. And so by swearing in the applicant, it provides remedies that weren't available to us in the past that now are. And it's only the applicant who is important in that regard. So we do not ask the, those who wish to address the matter to be sworn.
Understandable. I have, I live at 385 Thomas, which is across the street basically from both of these parties. I have no skin in the game. If you approve an electrified bar blare fence tonight, it's not going to change our lives at all on this side. I've lived in the house for almost 30 years, so I do have some history with what transpired prior to these new folks moving in on both houses. And I feel that the plan is ill-conceived, it's self-created, and will cause a significant hardship to the people living at 378, the adjacent property. First, I would like to address why I believe it's ill-conceived, and then I will address the fact about the hardship. First and foremost, I thought it was ill-conceived because the variance request is based on the code in effect for the neighboring property at 378 Thomas, not for the requestor's property at 358. And I'm not aware of any precedent for using an adjacent property's front and rear structure boundaries to justify a variance. The second item was about the stockade fence, and sometimes we use common words and we forget their meaning or origin, but stockade is a barrier formed from upright wood posts or stakes, especially as a defense against attack or a means of confining animals. The request is for a six-foot-high wooden stockade fence, which is the least aesthetic choice of all options, and I believe the placement of the fence would be directly on the Coon's property line, directly abutting the neighbor's driveway. And since the fence does not enclose a stockade, it is just a wooden property line enforcer, it does nothing to enhance security. One simply walks around right around the end of it, and in fact, it actually diminishes security for the Chateau Vieux, the neighbors, since it blocks the view of their rear entrance, their cars, and their garage from the surrounding neighbors. I would also be interested to know if the perceived security issue is a neighborhood problem that I might need to address also, or is it unique to that property? Another documented reason was privacy, and the proposed fence blocks the Chateau's view of the Coon's windowless garage and their swimming pool. And simply, again, by walking to the endpoint of this linear fence, those areas are completely visible, as well as the windows on the front of that home. Safety was mentioned as another reason for erecting the fence, and since the fence is a linear boundary delineator, it doesn't enclose anything, so I fail to see what safety issue is being enhanced. The request also states that the fence will provide protection and peace of mind for any future residents of the Chateau Vieux's property. I'm curious about protection from and peace of mind about what. I have been directly across the street from both of these properties for 29 years, and having a fenceless boundary between them two has been an asset, not a liability. And finally, with regard to precisely defining the proper property line, I would believe it would be less intrusive and more aesthetically pleasing if a landscape solution such as planters, bushes, or paving stones were used to accomplish the same purpose. That's why I thought it was ill-conceived, the hardship aspect of it. I'm not, I submitted some photographs. I didn't know if the board would have an ability to go out and look at this property before tonight's meeting. I submitted two sets of photographs. Four images were taken on Saturday with what I thought was the most reasonable guess of where the property line is, since I obviously have no way to determine that. And the other set of four photographs were taken today picturing the surveyor's stakes that outline exactly where the property is. And if that fence was on the boundary of where those stakes are, it would render the Chateau Vieux's driveway unusable. They would be unable to turn their vehicles around, forcing them to back out a long, narrow driveway bounded by a six-foot-high wooden fence onto a very busy Thomas Avenue. It would also cause the inability of any large vehicles, like a septic tank cleaning truck, to access the rear of the property. It will hamper snow removal, either using a plower or a snow blower. Both means would further narrow that driveway by at least a foot. And the children, who would be playing on the Chateau Vieux's property next to a 96-foot blind alley, would have a blocked view of any vehicle leaving the Coon's property. Chasing a missed or overthrown ball could put them directly in path of an exiting vehicle. In conclusion, I would like to make this comment, that the property at 378 Thomas is occupied by the Chateau family, two hard-working parents that have two wonderful, well-behaved children. is occupied by the Chateau family, two hard-working parents that have two wonderful, well-behaved children. Megan is vice president of the Seneca Neighborhood Association, the group responsible for planting and maintaining the garden at the Seneca School and various, um, social and charitable community projects. Phil, her husband, has built a little community sharing library that he installed on their front lawn. They, they are ideal Arundacoid neighbors. I have lived directly across the street from these two properties referenced in the variance request for almost thirty years. The prior owner of three seventy-eight Thomas lived there her entire adult life and ran a child daycare center for eight to ten children from that property. She had an extensive play area in the backyard and parents would drop off and pick up children on a regular basis. To the best of my knowledge, neither party ever expressed a concern for safety, security or noise control. They both utilized the adjacent paved driveways and shared the cost of snow removal, which I believe fits the spirit and definition of a prescriptive easement. I further believe good fences do not necessarily always make good neighbors, but good people always do.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else that wishes to speak next? I see there's several people lined up, I'm sure.
Good evening, gentlemen, my name is Walter Muslener, I live at three four-two Thomas Avenue, which is the property that is immediately adjacent on the other side to three fifty-eight. Uh, my wife and I have lived in our home for more than forty years and in that time, there has never been, to my knowledge, any disagreement between the people living in three fifty-eight and three seventy-eight. As the previous speaker mentioned, um, the families have always had an amicable relationship, no problems with regard to sharing the driveway. I think each family respected their own driveway to the maximum and, uh, there was never a problem. The house, uh, the three fifty-eight house is probably been built in two stages based on what I know from previous owners and probably dates back to the nineteen twenties, the, the original portion of the house. As I mentioned, we've lived there for more than forty years, it's always been an open, friendly, community-minded area. The contiguous driveways have never been an issue between earlier owners. No other home on Thomas Avenue or in the immediate area, to my knowledge, has such an out-of-compliance fence in their front yard. To my mind, as has been mentioned earlier, the proposed fence detracts, in fact, from safety and security of three fifty-eight and three seventy-eight by providing a barrier, which potentially is an impediment to emergency vehicles and emergency responders. It's also an impediment to maintain clear views of the areas on both sides of the fence, the proposed fence, which to my mind, uh, increases the likelihood of a safety problem. The proposed fence also extends to the mid-kitchen line of sight of our house, which has a setback which is not as deep as, uh, three fifty-eight, but deeper than three seventy-eight. So it presents an eyesore potentially from our north, northwest-facing windows, including our kitchen window, which, uh, is, uh, set in front of our kitchen sink. So when we're involved with working in the kitchen, we are often looking out over the yard from three fifty-eight to three seventy-eight. And certainly my experience has been that the people living in three seventy-eight, the Chauvres, have been very responsible neighbors, they have respected the concerns of Mr. Coons for maintaining the sanctity of his property line, of the property line. So again, it, it, it presents an eyesore for us, not only from the house, but also from our backyard, which again is, uh, if you, I guess you don't have a plat map of where our house is, but, uh, clearly overlooks their front yard. I would suggest that there certainly are more amicable, uh, that a more amicable understanding between the folks living in three seventy-eight and three fifty-eight should be able to come up with a more reasonable, um, solution to Mr. Coons' concerns about his property line. That fence violates at least three code restrictions, sets a bad precedent for fences in our neighborhood, which basically do not have any front yard fences by and large, and may in fact diminish property values, given the rather unsightly nature of such a fence. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next.
Hi, I'm Megan, um, I live at three seventy-eight Thomas, the adjacent property. I, I brought copies, is it okay to distribute them?
Uh-huh.
Um, so I have specific concerns that echo many of my neighbors. We moved in about a year and a half ago, um, shortly after David and Diane and we learned after moving in that they had put a cash offer on our house for their children and grandchildren to live next door. We are not the children and grandchildren, I'm sorry. We didn't know any of this and moved here anticipating a welcoming and friendly neighborhood. Um, we do have incredible neighbors all around, except for next door. We extended an invitation to our holiday gathering, our neighbors across the street invited them for a garden party and they have no interest in engaging. I'm honestly not sure why they chose to live in a neighborhood setting. Our houses are very close together and the shared driveway is a source of contention. We've been reprimanded several times, once when the kids had friends over and they rode their bikes across the driveway line. Um, the kids are terrified of a ball going over into David's yard. I came home from work one day and my son's friend was over for a playdate and his dad was there to pick him up and he parked his truck a few inches into the driveway. Honest mistake, when I got it out of my car, David came running into, from his house waving his arms and yelling at me, "What the, is this?" To be honest, I was afraid and I have avoided him since. I asked my husband to speak with him and he asked David not to communicate with me, it's incredibly awkward, sad and uncomfortable. David likes to lecture us and he's told us several times, he's a property line guy, that he cares deeply about the property line. We Googled him and found that he has a history of litigation with his neighbors, including a deeply divisive lawsuit, um, lawsuits against a neighboring landscape company in his past home. We've been incredibly careful to respect the property line, never going over it or apologizing when we do so, like the kids on their bikes that day. The fence will not stop accidental forays over the line, balls, friends pulling into the wrong driveway, people that don't get it, um, things that happen in a normal neighborhood setting, we respect that line. Um, I also drive out of my driveway every day, I back out, it's a hundred feet and I have never once driven on the grass, thank you. Um, there's an issue with their fence on the property in the back and I'm glad, I've, I will amend this, I suppose to say thank you for fixing that issue. Um, it did show up on our survey, I'm sure it showed up on David's original survey, I don't know why, it's news to him tonight. Um, and if he cares so deeply about respecting the property line, why has he been okay with that? One and a half feet into our yard, which we've never really mentioned, no big deal, we're good neighbors. Um, so all of that is by way of background on the motivation for this variance. To address the points of the variance request, um, number one, the possible change to the neighborhood character. The variance will result in an undesirable change to the character by blocking views. It will be detrimental to nearby properties, ours, because it will make snow removal difficult, prohibit septic or maintenance vehicles from accessing the backyard and restricts our access to our driveway, our garage. The property line cuts off the driveway, really. Um, a six-foot stockade fence will block sunlight, it'll block views, it'll block airflow to our patio and our driveway and our backyard. It brings a security concern because someone can hide behind the fence and we won't be able to see them. My kids are out there playing and there's somebody lurking and I won't know. Um, it's also impacting people driving north on Thomas with high visibility from the street and I think it ruins the view of these beautiful forested backyards. Are there alternative solutions that would not require a variance? Yes, we would welcome a grass patch continuing up the property line or even hedgerow plantings for privacy, but not rooting the aesthetics of the neighborhood. Consider whether the rest, requested area variance is substantial? Yes, it is substantial, it's three times the allowed length, stockade is not pleasant to look at and everyone driving down Thomas will get the worst side of it because that would be on David and Diane's side, the one with all the lines on the back. Um, it will block views for adjacent properties, three seventy-eight and, um, our neighbors on the other side. It will impede neighborhood safety and security with no line of sight to the garage, cars and driveway. Is it self-created? Yes, the current owner at three fifty-eight Thomas put an offer on our house for his children and grandchildren to live next door. They accepted our offer and David can't stand the sight of us, it has been contentious. Um, the fence is spiteful and it's out of character with this otherwise incredibly friendly neighborhood. Uh, we, along with every neighbor in the immediate vicinity, strongly object to this variance. Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Jeanette Muslener, I also reside at number three four-two Thomas Avenue on the other side of number three fifty-eight. We will be able to see any stockade fence going up in that area and I do draw the attention of the board, there was a zoning variance some years back by a previous owner to have a short picket fence placed between their property and our property. We talked about it, we agreed on what was acceptable and we accepted the zoning variance which was, uh, permitted. So it's about a two and a half, three-foot, um, picket fence, white picket fence. It's primarily decorative, it doesn't keep the deer out, that's for certain. Um, I feel that it's a mistake to put up a stockade fence in that area. I think if a landscaping, uh, suggestion can be made that would be acceptable to both parties, that might be the best solution. I have even spoken to a landscaper who actually used to live in number three fifty-eight and when I mentioned what was being proposed, she was just horrified at the thought of, of doing something like that to property that she lived in since she was a child. Um, I'm hoping that the board will take under advisement this and, and this proposal and do the right thing, thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak in opposition to the application?
Can I make another comment?
We generally give everybody one shot. Otherwise we can find ourselves in a situation where it never ends. Um, is there anyone who wishes to speak to the application, neither for or against, like to talk to us about fences or driveways or anything like that? Seeing none, we'll give the applicant, Mr. Coons, would you like to address anything that came up during the public, uh, input portion of the hearing?
Um, I'm not here to argue, I just would like to know what's allowed and what's not allowed and, uh, am I still under oath?
Yeah, oh yes.
There was no purchase offer made on this property by myself or my daughter or anything, but, uh, they did look at the house and decided that there was nothing that they were interested in. Um, so that, that is incorrect.
Okay. Just for the record, that wouldn't be a consideration, it's not one of the factors that, you know, were called upon to, uh, u- utilize in making a determination. Alright, we will, uh, close the hearing with respect to this matter then and move on to the next application. Next item on our agenda, I should say.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB one seven one one dash two, upon the meted request by James Hastings for an area variance to replace and expand the addition on a pre-existing non-conforming barn exceeding maximum permitted square footage on premises twenty-five ninety-three Norton Street in an R-one residential district.
Hello, good evening, James R. Hastings, two fifty-six Beavie Road. That's gonna be a tough act to follow.
If you could raise your right hand, Mr. Hastings, do you swear, affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
It will, I do.
Okay, alright.
Uh, last year I bought twenty-five ninety-three Norton Street that had a barn that was over a hundred years old on the property. Last January, I applied for and was granted a variance so I could start phase one of improving the barn and the property. I would like to thank you for granting me that variance, I'd like to show you what I did with it. The second page obviously is, uh, after.
Thank you.
Now I would like to start phase two. As you can see from the pictures today, that the bump out that was added to the barn is very unsightly and in need of major repair. The foundation is filled, the block is cracked, the walls and roof had pulled away from the barn leaving a two-to-four inch gap between the two, it is beyond repair. I need a variance because what I want to build is two hundred square feet bigger than the existing bump out. I would like the new bump out to go the entire length of the barn from twenty-one point six foot to thirty-six feet. This will enable me to cover and prevent additional damage to the back of the barn. Also by doing a roof the entire length as shown in the picture that I submitted, I would be replacing the fascias and the soffits and I would also be increasing the pitch that is presently on that bump out. I would like to, uh, increase the depth from nine point six foot to fourteen foot. This would help me avoid the existing footer when I dig the new one. It also maximizes the rafter span in eliminating waste. It would only increase my lot coverage by point five percent for a total of five point seven percent and I will still be thirty-seven foot from the back lot lines, from the sidelines.
So this picture we have right here, right, that's the finished product that you want to accomplish, right?
Roughly, it's gonna be vinyl sided and it's gonna have more windows in it.
Okay.
Is this the same property as the first sheet?
Yes.
So you've already done that?
That is the variance that was granted last January.
And this is where the white building?
Was.
Was.
Yes.
And now you're talking about a bump out that's around behind the barn?
Existing old barn, yes.
Okay.
And you should have a picture of the bump out in that folder someplace. Uh, even a close-up, there also should be a close-up of it. It shows a lot more of the damage to the back of the barn and the soffits and the fascia.
This photo?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And like I said, the difference between what I'm proposing and what's there will only be three hundred square feet.
Alright, so this is, what you're asking for is an accessory structure which is allowed to have square footage of nine hundred and you're asking for nine hundred and ten?
So this one is, gets to be a little bit, um, uh, what's a good way to say this? Interesting, complicated's a better word. Um, so the, when this application came before the board last year, it was for what was then, we were gonna call the garage structure next to the barn. Um, he came before the board to ask for wider than is allowed by code. Uh, if you'll remember, and indulge me, I'm going by memory only, but I believe he wanted thirty-five feet wide and thirty is the max. And because of the dimension, that garage structure only was gonna be a total of nine hundred and ten square feet with the dimension that he proposed. Um, the board granted that, um, variance at the time. Um, the, at the time, the barn wasn't really taken into consideration, it was a pre-existing structure, but it wasn't calculated as part of the overall, um, and so now we're looking at, um, the barn. So if, if this board's gonna render the, um, its decision, they may wanna combine the amount so that the, uh, variance reflects all outbuildings on this parcel. This is a bit unique because this is a former agricultural, you know, property and so the, it certainly predated, um, the, um, requirements and I think, uh, the past... And I think the past review of the application when it was first before here didn't even contemplate the barn because it was considered pre-existing, non-conforming and not part of that total garage. And now in retrospect, we'd like to make sure it's reflected. I said a lot of words and I'm not sure if any, probably said them too fast.
No, it made sense.
What's the barn used for?
Just a storage.
Storage? And the bump out in the back would be used for?
I'm torn at the idea of kinda like a greenhouse type thing, a lot of windows, a lot of skylights. But it's gonna be mostly storage until I really figure it out. Right now, I'm more interested in making it pretty and preventing any further damage to the back of the barn. The old wooden slots are starting to get rotted out where that, all the old siding's missing. And it has pulled away from it and it's starting to rot out.
And, and what is behind the barn?
The baseball fields, the soccer fields from Pardee School. There is a Google picture of that also. Of the school next to me and a farmhouse right down the road from me.
So there's a considerable amount of open space behind where you would be talking about this?
Yes. And I'll still be 37 foot away from my back property line. It sits on almost an acre and five eighths.
Carrie? The garage that was added or approved? Last year or two years ago?
La- last year.
Last year. Is that considered?
Earlier this year, excuse me. It was February of 2017.
Was that, was that considered part of the existing barn or a separate structure?
Yeah, so at the time, when, when staff reviewed this, the, the barn wasn't taken into consideration. So when this application came before, is now coming before us, we realized that was probably an oversight at the time. We should've calculated all of the outbuildings sort of combined and been looking at. It's one of those things where the barn predates, there's, there's a little bit of gray area in the code about, you know, agriculture accessory structures being allowed, but it doesn't, in our code now, the only definition is anything over 200 square feet gets treated like a garage. And I'm looking at Rob, who might chime in.
And I was just gonna add, I think that interpretation's a good one based on how the structure looks now compared to how it looked previously. Before, it looked like two structures cobbled together, but based on what he's done, I think we should be looking at, this is one building.
And so in, in, in doing that, we would have to combine the 910 of what was previously approved with that three-car structure or three bay width structure, it may not be three car, with the proposed barn footprint, which would be the 1454. So that would bring you to a total of 2364.4. So then the variance would be calculated for that, based on that.
And that 23 includes the new, the new bump out?
That includes a new bump out, correct. The current barn footprint was 1135.8 just on its own, not calculating the garage next door as well.
So what was that total again, 23?
So it would be, I'm just doing math in my head, so it would be 2364.4 as proposed. And then the only thing I would suggest is that you'd be minusing, instead of 900 to figure out what the variance is, you'd be minusing 910 because the past approval allowed the 910. And Rob's nodding, so I know I've done it right.
Yeah.
Okay.
According to my calculations, it would be 318.6 feet. If my old-fashioned math still works right.
Yeah, so 318 is over what is there now?
That's the variance that's being requested?
Right, but now we have to, if when we combine all of the outbuildings, the total square footage and granting the variance, you might wanna look at it that way. So that the 900 is the, 900 is the, by code, the requirement. You can't have more than 900 square feet of outbuildings. And then, or anything larger. But 910 was granted by this board as of February 2017.
What's there now is 1135.8 including the existing bump out?
And that's just for the, that is barn only, not including?
Doesn't include the bump out?
It includes a bump out, but not the garage next door.
Right. No, I understand that the garage next door is separate from that calculation.
Correct.
So as of right now, there's 2,045.8 square feet in the structure as it exists now.
Right now, it is, I, now I'm gonna just break out my calculator.
Sure.
Right now, as it sits, I believe, God, I love doing math on television. I believe it is
Right.
As, as it sits.
As it sits right now.
Correct.
And then we're looking to, he's asking us to take it up to
Yeah, look at us agreeing on the math. Perfect.
I guess the question had come up the last time we had proved this. The neighbors and some other people were questioning what's going on in, in the barns. You had, you have a contracting business yourself and you had skid steers and stuff like that that you were storing there?
No, I've been using them there. I am not storing them there.
Nope.
I've had all kinds of commercial vehicles dropping off asphalt shingles, roofing material, you know, trusses, the lumber. I got asphalt millions for the driveway. There's been, there's been a lot of activity there because of what I'm doing there.
So what are we storing inside all that space?
Mostly the stuff I accumulated over 50 years. My brother lives there, in the house, and my son lives there and they have stuff. So it's kinda-
Cars, trucks, motorcycles?
Yes, all, all kinds of junk, what you see in a typical garage.
All personal stuff or is it stuff, other friends and stuff?
It's just between the three of us, my son, my brother and myself. Nobody else has stuff there.
It, it looks good under what, you know.
Yep, and I wanna make the, the back of the barn look that good also.
I guess I'm curious, why do you need the, I understand the bump out's a problem. If you just took the bump out down and finished off the back of the barn, what would be the difficulty?
I'd have to tear off that asphalt siding and most of the wood behind that is rotten because all the water's gotten behind that.
You're gonna tear that off anyway, aren't you?
No, I am not. I'm just gonna go off the existing header that's still there in good shape and run it down to a new wall that's gonna be 14 feet out.
So you're not taking the bump out down?
Oh, I am taking the bump out down. I'm just not taking the wall that's between the bump out and the barn. And the wall that's to the west of the bump out. I'm not taking that down.
Are they gonna be connected to the barn, to each other?
Through one passageway, not the entire.
So they're gonna have a common wall?
Yes.
Alright, is that common wall there now?
Yes.
Alright, so I, my question would be, what would the problem be if you just took down what is, I guess it would be south of the, what's going to be the common wall? And finished off the back of the barn? What I'm looking at is, is you've got a, a structure here that's at this point more than double what most places in town are allowed. And we've made a few exceptions in the past for slightly bigger garages, but we've turned down a lot of requests for people who wanted to have seven or eight car garages and, and things like that. And so I'm trying to figure out what is the need for this additional space. I understand that in building it, you wanna go a little bigger so that you avoid the problems that were created by what's there. But if you just tear down what's there and finish it off, how does that impact adversely your use of the property? You don't have as much, you have 318.6 feet less of storage, that I understand.
Well, it'd be more on that because if I tore down the bump out, I wouldn't have the bump out and I wouldn't have the space next to it. So I'd lose that whole back of the barn. Isn't that what you said, to tear out the bump?
Have you, at this point, you're not using the bump out right now. The bump out looks like it's falling.
Nothing that's in warburles and stuff like that and garden tools, nothing that I care about because it leaks really bad.
I don't know what space next to the bump out you're talking about.
When I make the addition bigger, when I go the entire length of the building.
Right, if you go the, if, if we were to grant the variance that you're asking for, it's gonna be 318.6 feet more now than what it is now. Alright, and so my question to you is, you're already at 2,045 feet, which is more than double what we've allowed other structures, you know, not connect, not part, not houses to be in town. And I'm questioning why you can't make do with just getting rid of this bump out. I understand the bump out's causing you a lot of problems and it's structurally not sound, but what's the problem with just taking it down and finishing off the back of the barn?
That wasn't what I had planned.
Well, I understand that, but I, I'm trying to, see, we, we can't just say, well, the homeowner would like to have this, so therefore it's okay to grant it. We've gotta have some practical hardship that is created by applying the rules that are laid out in the zoning ordinance before we can just grant a variance. Otherwise, we're just acting arbitrarily and capriciously. We like you, so we'll let you do it, but we don't like the other guy, so we won't let him. We have to have reasons for it. And I'm looking for what it is that necessitates or justifies having this structure on the back of the barn when you could just get rid of it. And it seems to me, you have, you're gonna have more storage space than many people in town have square footage in their houses.
Well, one reason that comes to mind right now is that the structure that I would be building would almost be like putting gussets on the barn. It would keep the barn from, it's 100 and almost 150 years old. It would act as a support to keep the barn stable, so it would not move.
Okay.
I mean, that is one of the reasons.
You could stabilize the barn without putting an addition on the side of it.
Well, it's already, kinda already there, the addition on the side of it. Granted that what's there probably isn't helping the barn at all, but-
You're, that addition that's on the side of it, you're planning on taking it down and putting a bigger addition on the side of it.
That is what I would like to do.
Right.
And making the back of the barn look as good as the front.
Well, and again, hats off to you. It does look great. However, you know, the necessity to have the extra, it's almost a, a, a large garage that you're putting on the back of the barn. Another large garage, which you already have quite a bit of space, so. It, it, there are other alternatives to repairing the back wall of the barn, you know, so it, it is strong.
Well, if we need a plan B, I guess what I would like to do is just go on the outside of what is there so I don't have to deal with the existing footer. You know, right now it's 10 by 21. What if I went 12 by 23? So you're not really giving me any more square footage, but you're not making me have to go through the existing footer and tear it out all apart. Would that be a compromise?
Again, I, I, in my opinion, I, I don't think letting you make it larger at any point is not, it's not a necessity. It's not something, I believe that, you know, if you wanna fix up the outside of it, side it and roof it and whatever, that's one thing, but it's, it's, to go bigger, we've already granted you extra space when we did the last addition.
I think I rewarded the town of Rynacoit pretty well for that extra space.
Well, you rewarded yourself.
I kinda deserve a bone, a little bit, for the good job I've done over there. The improvements that I made to the property, the improvements I made to the barn. I didn't think I was asking anything too outrageous or ridiculous. There's a giant school next to me. There's a giant farm next to the school.
Again, I, 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 hats off to you for doing a nice job and making it look good. I don't wanna take that away from you. But at a certain point, us as board members have to decide whether or not it is something that passes our zoning rules. And, and in my opinion, no. You know, it's, it's large enough. That's just me, the one board member, but you know, you've got the building there, you wanna refinish it, make it look nice, great, you know, but to add to it, I don't see the necessity, other than the fact that you want it bigger. I mean,
Well, I thought it was a win-win situation. I get a bigger building, you get a prettier building in town of Rynacoit, so when people are at the ball field, they don't say, oh, look at that dump. They say just the opposite.
You can still make it, you can still make it look nice for yourself. You can still make it look nice. It, it just doesn't have to look bigger. You know, it, it's, again, that's my opinion. There's the rest of us on the board.
You threw out other dimensions. Something, 12 foot by 23 feet? What are the dimensions now that, if we were to grant and let you do what you'd like to do, what are the dimensions going to be of the part back from the barn?
My plan A was 14 by 36.
14 by 36, okay.
Now, if you need a plan B, I'd like to just be able to go to the outside of the existing footer, which would be 12 by 23 or 24. That is a good round number, 12 by 24. So I wouldn't be going all the way to the end of the barn, but I would be replacing the structure and avoiding the existing footers.
So the 12 by 23 foot would put you outside of the bump out. It would remove the structurally impaired portion of the barn and essentially be what's there now?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, I have a question. I'm, I'm a little bit confused, maybe, maybe because I'm the oldest guy on this board, I don't know, but this picture that we looked at at the beginning?
Yes.
Does not exist like this now, right? This is the goal.
That is the goal. There's no variation of that, but that is not what exists right now.
Okay, now there's another picture here. Okay, what do I do with it? This one?
That is what I built with last year's variance.
Okay, so the end of this thing, the right end of it, used to be the old garage, is that right?
Yes.
So you've got rid of that and you're ready to do this very nice looking. Now, what you're proposing tonight is behind us to go the full length of the barn part.
Yes.
Which would also envelop the bump out.
Yes.
Footprint and all that. We get, we over, just go over that. We come up with this.
Yes.
I'm a little more liberal than my colleagues on this board. I don't see that it's overtly huge, ugly or beyond.
Calling me conservative?
I'm usually the conservative one. I think what your plan is, looks good and I, I think you could, you could argue this for quite a while. I appreciate the fact that you're willing to at least come out beyond that footprint. Because I'm not a construction guy, but I can appreciate not having to deal with all that footer stuff. What's, what's there? It's just gonna be extra time and money for a couple of more feet. I would be, I would be open to the, folks, the full picture here. I think it does look good in town of Rynacoit. And I do think it's a, it's kind of a visible garden spot because of where it is. But I won't say anymore until it comes time to vote, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
I got a, the plan, the plan you got, she gave us, shows a six-foot existing fence?
Yes.
That, that's there and?
Yes.
I can't see it, you know, I was looking at. Okay.
Seeing none, is there anyone here who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk about barns or anything else related? But is neither for or against the application? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and move on to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next item, oh, I'm sorry, next item on the agenda is case number ZB one seven one one dash three, upon the matter of request by Saint Joseph's Ukrainian Catholic Church for an area variance to install an illuminated electronic monument sign exceeding maximum permitted height and square footage on premises nine zero eight East Ridge Road in an R one residential district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and gentlemen of the board. I'm George Honoschowski, and I'm representing Saint Joseph's Ukrainian Catholic Church located at nine zero eight East Ridge Road. And we are asking for a height variance uh to place the sign that you see before you. Uh, it'll replace two signs, one that we've had for thirty years, that's no longer functional, and another one that's uh kind of uh half-permanent and half uh temporary, depending on the seasonal uh event going on, like the festival.
If you could raise your right hand, is there anyone else who would be speaking as well? If, uh, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
So you'd like to replace this white in need of painting pipe structure with something like Walgreens, the town, both of the high schools, and the Ridge Culver Fire Department have?
Oh, no, something better.
Okay, alright. But that's what you, you're looking to have an electronic sign basically where this?
Uh, no, actually, uh, the sign is going to, if you have this map here of our parish, uh, over here you have the rock tree, and it'll be, you see the two windows facing Ridge Road East? On this, it'll be uh diagonal to the building and diagonal to uh, not diagonal, but perpendicular uh to Ridge Road East. The sign over here is going to come down completely, and then there's another sign here that advertises our bingo and during the summer, our festival, that's coming out too. So we're consolidating...
Come down?
That sign is coming down, yes.
And the white piping signs for the festival and the bingo will come down?
That's coming down. We're consolidating everything into one, which will make my life easier because I'm responsible for putting those things up and updating them.
Okay.
So I'm not getting any younger.
So basically, you're going from two two existing signs to one nice sign?
Actually, two and a half. Two existing and one seasonal.
Carrie, we're looking for two variances, a height variance and square footage?
Uh, that is correct, yes, for this one.
All we have, the current sign, is actually eight feet high, the one that we're getting rid of, so we're kinda looking for a swap.
And and that one's been there how long? I know it's there at least thirty-seven years.
At least thirty to forty years now.
Okay.
And it needs major overhaul or replacement in itself, because water has leaked into it, uh, electronics partially damaged. And it looks kind of old and decrepit.
You're talking about this thing?
Yes, yes.
I was talking about the other two.
Oh, the other one, uh, is the second sign on the bingo. There, that one is kinda starting to rot.
But that's been there like thirty-seven years as well, hasn't it?
Um, that's the second sign. I put up the first sign back at around nineteen seventy-five or so, and that one kinda rotted away, so it was replaced with this one. And I've repaired this one because the wood is rotting. So we actually reinforced it, uh, just to avoid additional cost. I'm getting tired of doing that.
And this will enable you to provide information to the public about events at your church that hopefully will bring people to your congregation without having to put up multiple signs for multiple events?
Correct. And it's actually moving us into the twenty-first century.
I'm just curious, how long did it take you from when you first had the idea to getting here tonight?
Uh, let's see now. I think I've been working on this project for four years?
Four years?
Now, the the, now you have to understand, yes, the concept has been around for four years. I proposed it, but I said...
I was just trying to get a a balance on how long it might take my church to get through the process.
Well, but but you see, the thing is that what I said was I will go for the sign, but not with church money. If I can't raise the money, the sign doesn't go up. So I found a donor who is funding the project.
Very good.
Do you have a donor?
We don't. There therein lies the problem.
Yes, you do. You have taxpayers.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Nothing to do with the sign. What are you gonna do with the flags?
Uh, the flags are staying where they are. There's going to be a slight change. You see the cross in front of the church?
Okay.
That cross is going to move into the planter box in front of the flags. So actually, it'll be a better visibility of the front of the church from the road, because that kinda detracts now.
Okay.
And between the flags, we have a monument by the school for our veterans from the Second World War that we're going to move. So whenever we have any ceremonies honoring our veterans, our fallen veterans, it'll be in front of the church now.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk about signs, festivals, anything like that? Seeing none?
We have one coming up in August of next year.
For my anniversary every year. Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, case number ZB one seven one one dash four. Upon the matter of request by Lantac, acting as agent for Craig Armitage for area variances, to construct a skywalk connecting two adjacent buildings with less than required front, side setbacks on premises seven twenty-three Washington Avenue in a C business district in R one residential district, and less than required front, side, and rear setbacks on premises seven fifty-one Washington Avenue in a C business district.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name's John Sharaba. I'm with Lantac. I'm representing Craig this afternoon, or this evening.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Which right hand was that?
Um, this application might be familiar to most of the members on the board. Um, back in two thousand fourteen, uh, this board granted Craig a use variance for the construction of a new building uh on the former CSX Railroad property, uh, for the construction of uh a new building to serve, to serve as a base for his electrical contracting company.
That's the red building that looks kinda like a barn, right?
Yeah, and there was a lot of direction from this board how it looked, and uh, and to that end, uh, it's been now an asset to the neighborhood. He works hand in hand with the school district, so uh, maintains this building across the street. Um, a lot of the neighbors have uh really praised what he's done. And uh, also, uh, since that time and and being well-established there, his business has has grown tremendously. He's very successful in what he does and has found a need to expand. Um, as you guys are aware, having a use permit, uh, special, a uh, a use variance, we can't expand with our own footprint. Uh, Craig started looking outside of Ronaquoy. Uh, he is a Ronaquoy native, wants to keep his family in Ronaquoy, keep his business here. Uh, he's actually hired several people that are residents of the town, and so it's important to him to stay in Ronaquoy. So he looked for other opportunities. Well, the opportunity came knocking. It's the building next door. It's a small, about a thousand-square-foot building that's attached to the other apartment building that's next door of that. So there's a existing building that he has purchased. This isn't under speculation. It's just on the other side of his property line, and he plans on moving his, some of his administrative staff and estimators into that uh square footage. Approximately four employees would be over there. Uh, but now he's trying to figure out, okay, I got this building. How am I gonna get my guys over there? How are we gonna communicate, and how can we work this out? And he came up with the idea of the skywalk, which is basically a five-foot-wide uh bridge connecting the two uh buildings. Uh, it works out rather well. The first floor of his main building at at uh seven twenty-three is about the same elevation as the second floor of the building uh to the north, seven fifty-one. And if you look closely at the pictures I provided, you'll also see on the west elevation of that existing building to the north, there's a door going to nowhere. If you see that, there's a, a door that kinda goes right out, and if you walked out that door, you'd fall eight feet to the ground. So his plan was to construct this skywalk that would go from his building all the way along the west face of that new building he purchased and allow his employees to walk through there, network through there, and and uh, and operate out there in a closed environment. Um, we feel this, although it's unique, um, is a self-created uh situation, but the need of his business and the success of his business, he needs to expand. We also um feel it's not a negative uh physical uh change to the neighborhood. Um, it's gonna be elevated, so you're gonna be able to see below it, and you're gonna still be able to see above it. But it's kind of an alley. The only way you're gonna see this structure if you're standing on Washington Avenue, right between the two buildings and the property line, and looking west. And but it's in the care of the neighborhood. Like I said before, the 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 building he bought has a zero lot line with the building to the north. Uh, there's other examples of that in the, in the, in the neighborhood. Um, but we feel it's gonna be an asset to keep um CM Armitage Electrical in the town, in the place that it is. And uh, we hope you agree, and I can answer any questions at this time.
Is this the door that you're talking about?
Yes, yep.
So it's going to come back to that?
It's gonna go all the way across that west face.
Across the west face of seven fifty-one?
And I tried to illustrate that in the small site plan. It's hard to see attached to that.
And with talking with Craig today, the siding is gonna be the same as the existing building?
Yes.
Some same flow going across?
Exactly. It's gonna match the maroon siding with the with the cream trim and white trim like that.
The skywalk's actually gonna go behind that other building, the new, the new purchase?
Correct.
Okay, um, how's it gonna tie the roof in on that, on the back part of it?
Uh, right now, I was thinking kind of a shed roof, probably stop short of the original roof on that building and and kind of a shed roof uh going from east to west. That's also like some of our sketches that we show are kind of rudimentary. We don't really wanna spend money with an architect yet to do the final structural drawings, uh, but he does want windows, so he showed a little window on that. So they might have a window or two uh on the uh east elevation, and probably the same on the west to allow light, so you're not walking down a dark tunnel. But I I was kinda shocked when I saw that door, as I explained, it kinda works out well.
Is there a reason that the two parcels can't be combined into one, other than it would require a re-subdivision and...
Well, I think it's, I think it goes back to this, I mean, I could talk to staff more about that. Re-subdivision is a process that I would gladly charge Craig to do, but uh, the uh, expanding non-conforming use, I think, would be a problem. So I, that's why we went this route.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns from the board? Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about skywalks? Don't we say they were gonna put one connecting Dake and the high school? I've never done that.
Yeah.
Alright, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and move on to the next item on our agenda.
Next item on the agenda is case number ZB one seven one one dash five. Upon the matter of request by Mayor Lance Surveying, acting as agent for Mario Pirrello for area variances associated with a two-lot subdivision with less than required setbacks, lot size, lot width, lot depth, and required parking on premises twenty forty East Ridge Road in a C business district.
Good evening, name's Rich Meyer. I'm Mayor Lance Surveying. I'm representing Mario Pirrello. First property located twenty forty East Ridge Road.
If you could raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm that everything you say tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
Um, property's located twenty forty East Ridge Road. It's on the corner of Ridge Road and Walser Avenue. Um, what Mario would like to do is uh currently, at the way the property's situated right now, there's a commercial building and a residential structure on the property. What we'd like to do is do a two-lot subdivision. Obviously, uh, given the shape and the size of the lot, that there are some variances um required. Um, but having said that, um, the house lot that we're gonna create at the end of the day is gonna conform to the neighborhood, um, nothing out of the characteristics of the neighborhood. Uh, he does have some interest in just a commercial property, and that's the, kind of the goal for doing all of this right now. Um...
If if I understand it correctly, nothing's going to change that anyone would see driving by, walking by, or even living in the neighborhood?
Correct.
Other than an artificial line that a surveyor could detect?
This is true.
Okay. And it's been like this for how long?
Well, the lot in itself, um, the commercial building that's there now was built in nineteen forty-seven. Um, the house was uh probably dated nineteen thirty. Earlier than that, Mario tells me that the house used to be on the corner of the property, and they actually physically moved it to its current location, so...
So the commercial structure that's been there seventy years, the house has been there in its current location, probably seventy-one years?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Is that commercial building the currently law offices?
This is true.
Okay, I'm sure I'm looking at the right one, yeah.
Yes, sir.
What are the uh plans for the residential house? Is it gonna be, somebody currently living there, the house next door to the...
It's being rented out. It's it currently, yes.
I noticed that it's kinda sharing a driveway with...
This is true. This is part of the variances that we're looking for. Um, I think it requires two parking spaces, and right now it only has one.
I'm just gonna correct that. I believe it's a two-unit um, it's a two-unit, and so by code, it actually needs four spaces. So the relief that's being sought is um, three spaces in this instance.
Looking at the survey, is it possible to put a driveway? It it almost looks like the the pavement's all the way up to that house right now, is it not?
There's definitely it is.
But in dividing, in dividing the property, if I'm, if I'm looking at, that's a dark, the dark black line of uh, on the survey.
It's the one that's got the dimension of seventy-six point five zero?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
That'll give the house room to add a parking spot or two, wouldn't it? If I'm...
I was just taking my direction from Carrie, so...
Oh, the mic on. So the, what they're showing is what the gravel driveway that exists now probably only accommodates one, but certainly they could um, they could look at reconfiguring that lot or like having a driveway. We in um indicated that they should seek on that portion the driveway setback, so that typically you need a two-foot setback from edge of um, of paved area for a driveway um to property line. And so in this instance, they'd be showing a zero uh setback. And so in this instance, they'd be showing a zero, uh, setback between the property line and the edge of the driveway. But they certainly could create driveway space there if they wanted to do that.
But isn't it already paved?
It, I believe that it is. I think it's already.
Looks like it's paved all the way to the house, right?
I, I believe so, yeah.
And around the west side of it as well. It's all paved.
So if it could stay as is and, and accommodate vehicles, I don't know if it could accommodate the three that's needed or if it only would fit two comfortably?
Well, it's, it's roughly ten-seven wide to the lot line from the house.
Right. And that's enough width to accommodate the vehicle.
A car parked right next to the house and a car parked closer to the street, there's three spots along with the gravel driveway.
So then we can eliminate that, the parking, if it, if this board thinks that, uh, the parking can be accommodated and meet the requirement, then we can remove that from the, um, the items. We were just going by what was physically shown as driveway.
Actually, you, you, I, I guess the requirement is four spaces for the, for the?
For the, for that.
House?
Yep, correct.
And you, and you, and you have one, that's the gravel driveway now, right? And then your variance is two, so that doesn't make any sense.
That's a typo. It's supposed to be three. So the one is provided.
One is, all right, so, but if you use that full length, which is seventy-six fifty, from the, from the street all the way out to the back, which is already paved, there's your three parking spaces right there.
Correct. And so in this case, then we could indicate that that?
A zero lot line, a zero lot line for the driveway.
Correct. And then the?
Variance for that house and you, and you don't have to worry about the parking spaces.
The parking spaces can be removed from the list of variances.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, I, I reviewed the, uh, short environmental assessment form that you provided and there were two questions.
Sure.
Uh, questions ten and eleven. Ten, will the proposed action connect to an existing public-private water supply? You checked no, and then it says if no, describe the method for providing potable water.
Well, it does not need to connect to public water because it's already connected, so.
So the answer?
I'll have to make a change on that, I believe.
So that should be yes, then, correct?
Yes, sir.
All right. And then will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities? You also checked no. And it says if no, describe the method for providing wastewater treatment. Should that be a yes too?
It should be a yes as well, sir.
Okay, all right. I kind of figured that may have been the case. All right. You just like checking the no boxes.
Well, get on a roll.
All right. Any other questions or comments from the board? Seeing none, we'll open the hearing up to public input. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone who'd like to talk to us about driveways, setbacks, parking spaces, or anything at all like that? Seeing none, we'll close the hearing with respect to this matter and we will reconvene at approximately eight forty-three or so. That we have the, that the applicant for three fifty-eight Thomas has left. And the applicant for twenty forty Ridge Road has left. And we have with us twenty-five ninety-three Norton, nine oh eight East Ridge Road, and seven twenty-three and seven fifty-one Washington Avenue. So the first item for the board's consideration is the application pertaining to twenty-five ninety-three Norton Street. Uh, this is a type-two action for seeker purposes. Uh, does anyone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll, I'll, you want to do it there, Chairman?
I'll, I'll make, I would, um, move that we, uh, grant the application for a twelve-foot by twenty-three-foot, uh, addition to the, well, I shouldn't, twelve, twelve-foot by twenty-three-foot replacement of the, uh, bump out. It will, uh, not change the character of the neighborhood to any, uh, extent because it, there already is a structure that will just be within, uh, the bounds of what, uh, is being, what I'm, shouldn't say what, what the applicant indicated he would accept as a compromise to a much larger, uh, structure. Uh, the alternatives that do not require a variance would be to simply tear out the bad bump out and leave it, um, without anything. Um, the applicant has indicated that he'd prefer not to do that. It, this is not a substantial request in relation to what is already present. Uh, it's not going to have any adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions. And it is not self-created because it's created by the deterioration of the, um, structure that's there.
So in giving him basically an extra two and a half feet by, if I'm doing this right, by one and a half feet, right?
Yeah, let's him go outside the existing.
Let's him go outside the existing. Um, it's going to make the square footage, which is basically what we're giving the variance based on the square footage, right?
Mm-hmm.
So what did I say here? We want two and a half, two-point-five? So you're adding three-point, no, that's not right. You're giving him nine, nine more square feet.
Roughly.
Does that sound right?
Outright. I think. It'd be one and a half feet by whatever the?
So the existing barn is eleven thirty-five. He's going to eleven forty-five by letting him move the one wall out. Uh, two and a half feet, move the other wall out, one and a half feet.
I believe so.
Carrie, am I doing that right? Michelle? Carrie?
I just want to see the, what they're proposing.
What was the dimensions you said?
Oh, I had this written down. Hang on. I had, I already started calculating this. Hang on one moment.
Jim?
Huh?
What was the dimensions? You said twelve by?
It, twelve by twenty-three.
And currently it's nine, nine-point-four by twenty-one-point-six.
Hold on one second. I actually calculated when you guys were talk, when you gentlemen were talking about the, um, possible modification.
So if it's?
So the twelve by twenty-four would be, um, two, twelve, oh, I thought you said twenty-four. I thought it was what the applicant had indicated or?
It's about a seventy-five square foot increase.
How, how am I doing the math wrong?
Because you're, you're multiplying the one and a half by the two and a half, but it's actually the one and a half would go for, uh, twenty-one point six feet. And the two and a half feet goes for approximately six, six or seven feet. I've got fifty-three point seven-five square feet. But it's approximately sixty to seventy square, additional square feet, uh, to just essentially replace the deteriorated portion of what is already existing, which would take it up to close to, um, twelve hundred.
And you said it was a difference of seventy, what'd you say, seventy?
I calculated fifty-three point seven-five. Rob calculated seventy, seventy-five. Somewhere in that vicinity.
All right.
Is there a second for the motion?
I'll second.
So we're, should the, uh, motion read that you're taking it to?
Motion reads that we would grant the variance to the extent of a twelve-foot by twenty-three-foot, uh, structure to?
Take the barn from eleven thirty-five to?
Twelve hundred, roughly.
Twelve-ten. All right. Very good.
On the question, it's not really what he's asking for, right?
No, it's a, it's the compromise that he indicated that he would be willing to accept. Between the difference between going as big as he would like to go across the whole back of the barn versus just essentially redoing what is already there. Just coming out a little further on both sides to avoid the footers and the issues that created by the structure.
That's good, because I think that'll save him a lot of problems, but what's the, um, what's the reasoning, I guess, of not just granting this variance as proposed?
What, what, what would be the reason for us not just giving everybody in the town as big of a garage as they want?
Yeah, the, the expect-
It's, at a certain point, we have to say how much is too big. If I, when I had a, a ten-car garage in my, on my, in mine, why can't, why can't you just give it to me? There's a, there, it's not a hardship that he needs it.
Yeah, I think, I think the expectation is that everyone in Rondicoy should improve and, and can, and take care of their property. Because they do so, which is their civic duty, there shouldn't be any bonus of adding additional space or any additional violations of our law because they did what they were supposed to do to the property. Doesn't matter that, that it was vacant or whatever, that's a bonus to him. He probably got a big price, had a, had, had a big piece of property at a reasonable price. So because you take every property, there's no, there's no obligation that the town goes, kudos, know you can do something that's not in a variance because you've, you've done your civic duty.
And, and, and don't forget, we already gave him a big addition when he redid the, the, the building the first time. We already added to that size quite, quite substantial, so...
That's right, and I guess the reason I'm sympathetic toward his request is because, number one, um, he did an excellent job on it.
I agree, I mean, the guy's done a beautiful job, it went to 100%.
Tear down the town, doesn't put a bad mark on it, it actually looks very nice.
I agree.
And I'm not saying that's the reason why he should be rewarded, so to speak, with extra square footage, but here's somebody that's conscientious enough and willing to invest to make that really a nice thing. And it's also, in the middle of nowhere, basically, is the schoolyard behind it.
But it's still a residential area, and it's still a lot of garage. And again, I get, that's my opinion.
Well, that's, that's a judgment call that I know we've made in the past, and I don't always agree with that either, so...
I'm thinking back to the gentleman on Brown Road, I think it is, who was, who was next to the school, who expanded and did a really super job on the structure that he put in the back, and then he added on to it, and we didn't allow him to add on to it.
Well, he enclosed it.
He had enclosed it, right, which is, this is going to be enclosed. And the structure that he had there was of comparable size to what is here. I mean, we're talking about 2,000 square feet roughly at this point. And we've, I re, I'm also recalling a proposal for a garage, I think it's on Bayview Drive, that we scaled back because it was so far over what the code would have permitted. And here, the way I view this as, he's, he's done an excellent job improving the property, and essentially what this lets him do is take down the bad part of the structure and finish fixing it up the way he's fixed up the rest of it without a tremendous expansion of space. I mean, at 2,400 square feet, it'd be larger than a lot of the houses in town. And it's not even a house, it's a storage facility.
A barn?
I know, I like barns, but the barn has a garage that's attached to it that's larger than, or at the maximum end of what we allow for garages. It then has the barn tacked on to it, giving him the space in the back to improve it and structurally, make it structurally sound without having to, and, you know, and if there was some definite reason for going bigger, then I'd be more inclined to, but I understood about the structural part, and that's why I'm thinking if we limit it to essentially what's there with a little bigger that lets him do it that way, that then we're sticking, we're sticking closer to what's in the code and what we've done in the past when we've been presented with large facilities. I'm recalling also the, the facility down on, that was proposed down on, was it Point Pleasant? Off of, the corner of 590.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we didn't approve that either, we thought that was too big. So I think that's the same rationale that is applying here.
Well, maybe the same rationale, but the circumstances, I think, are quite different. So I, I understand what you're saying. And I'm glad you're proposing at least that much. I'm still gonna vote against it, but that's, that's...
That's fine. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
And any abstentions? Motion carries, um, six votes in favor, one vote opposed, no abstentions, and we are all present. You're very welcome, have good luck, sir. It looks very nice what you've done. Next item is the application by St. Joseph's Ukrainian Church at 908 East Ridge Road. I didn't have my things in order here. This is a type two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make an applica, or a motion with respect to this application?
I'd like to make a motion, we approve this request for the signage church with the following findings. It does not reflect any great change in character to the neighborhood. There are no really all-good alternatives to this request because they just need, they need new signage, and actually, less signage. Not a very substantial request. I think the height is the biggest part of it, but that's reasonable, especially on that particular part of Ridge Road. We should not have had any adverse effect on the physical or environmental conditions of the area. And it's not really self-created because things get old and deteriorate, and it's a good idea to keep up.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we all continue to be present. Next app, item on the agenda pertains to 751 Washington Avenue with respect to this matter, part of the packet that was presented to us was a short environmental assessment form. Did everyone have an opportunity to review that as part of the application?
Yes.
Unlisted, yep.
So, I would make a motion that, um, we find that, make a negative declaration that this project will not, um, have a, that it will not have a negative impact. We're declaring that it will not have a negative impact on the environment.
I second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we all continue to be present. Does someone wish to make a motion with respect to this application?
I'll make a motion
Alright.
that we approve this variance. I don't believe it'll have any environmental impact, well, obviously, based on the assessment. I don't think it's, um, gonna hurt the character of the neighborhood. It is a self-created issue because he is expanding the office space that he needs, but he has gone from one commercial building over to another commercial building. And, again, um, it is a self-created issue, but, uh, the fact that it's a self-created issue is because his business is expanding. Based on that criteria, I believe we should approve it.
I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we all continue to be present. The next item on the agenda for consideration relates to 358 Thomas Avenue. This is a type two action for seeker purposes. Does anyone wish to make an application with, or a motion with respect to this application? Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion that we deny the variance as requested. I have significant concerns about the, um, in looking at the survey and hearing the testimony, it appears that the driveways have been in their current location for a substantial number of years. It appears from what's been provided that the installation of that fence would create potential issues with the use of the driveway for the property immediately to the west. And I don't think it's appropriate for the board to make a determination that would impact the issue of to what extent and where the property line is that divides the property and what, um, rights or benefits may have accrued over years. I also don't believe that running, although the neighbor to the west would put up a fence there under the code without needing any variance, they're not asking for it, and the house that's asking for it needs the variance. I would not oppose if the board felt so inclined to allow him to put up a six-foot fence up to the point where the pavement ends running north to where the chain-link fence is. I agree with the comments that a stockade fence really wouldn't look good there. I would think something of, most people these days have been going for the dog-eared top plank fence, which I think is much more attractive and less intrusive than a stockade fence. But it ought, but from the photo, he may not, I don't know, he's asked for it to go, I believe, from the end of the chain-link fence up to that point. I would be okay with that, but if nobody else feels that way, I'm perfectly content to simply deny the variance. I would, and in support of that motion, I would indicate that, uh, the people who spoke in opposition identified a change to the neighborhood character that could result from the installation of the fence, and I don't believe that that would be a positive change. The alternatives that don't require a variance, there were none, a number of them were discussed. It is a substantial request. It may have some negative effect on the physical or environmental conditions in that it's essentially a wall, and the situation appears to be self-created because there's at least a 40-plus-year history of not having any need or even a perceived need to have a fence in that location.
I second.
What's the motion, to deny the fence totally?
To deny the variance unless, if somebody, I would be open to amending it to allow him to put the fence up to where the pavement starts from there north, but that's, if there was a sense among the rest of you that that was, that should be allowed, I wouldn't have a problem with that, but going beyond where the grass ends and the pavement begins, I have huge problems with that.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, he didn't, he didn't request that, that, um, a fence for the back of his yard, so I don't even think that we should even amend it to allow. If he wanted, he should come back.
I thought that he was asking to have a fence go from where the chain-link fence ends all the way up to the, some midpoint in the driveway.
Yeah, but look, looking at, looking at where the chain link, point A, where the cha, chain-link fence ends, that's not where the issue is. From what I got from his testimony, he's more interested in B to B.5. That's what I understood, midway in between where that L curve is to the south of point A. So, so I, I didn't get the sense at all that he was interested in anything other than blocking that joint part of the driveway.
Which, there was alternatives that you brought up and, and putting, putting, cutting the, cutting the pavement out and, and putting shrubs there, or?
A natural barrier, or?
Natural, you know.
Yeah, he's, he's more, he's more concerned with controlling the neighbor's behavior than actually providing privacy or anything legitimate, you know, that would grant him a variance.
Yeah, all I wanted to do is indicate that I'd be open to that much of a fence, but nothing beyond that, so... I don't get any strong sense that there's any interest in the board to amend the motion. So the motion would be to deny the variance based on the findings that I put forward.
I'd second it, or as it is...
Second. Mr. Evans seconded it. Uh, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we all continue to be present. The next item is the application pertaining to 2040 East Ridge Road. This is an unlisted action for seeker purposes. We've been provided with the environmental assessment form as part of the application. Did everyone have an opportunity to review that? And it was amended to correct two answers on the form during the hearing. As amended, um, I believe that it indicates that it would be a negative declaration. Is there, and it would so move, is there a second to that?
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, and we all are still present with respect to the applications for the variances. Is there a motion with respect to that?
I'd like to make a motion, um, but I, I have to ask a question first. So are we doing two separate lots? We have to make motions for both of them?
No, this is actually one lot currently, and so the variances that you're gonna be granting, well, no, I take that back, so it's one, you could indicate the variances for lot one and lot two on the proposed subdivision, just to clarify, so that the record can be clear on which one is getting which things, if that makes sense.
So that being said, lot one, which I believe is the house, we need, um, we no longer need the, the parking spaces to be a variance because we're going to give them pavement up to the lot line variance for the south lot line. Zero, zero setback for the pavement. So that will eliminate the parking, um, the parking variance. I, I will say we would give them the square foot variance, which is, um, a variance of, of, uh, if I'm reading that correctly, 16,000 square feet. That's, am I reading that correct?
You are, so in the, remembering that this variance, even though it's a residential structure, it has to meet the minimum lot requirements in the C Business District, and, um, so it'll be a pre-existing non-conforming structure in a C Business District.
That being said, I think we should approve the lot area variance. And then the, um, last is the, or the last two are the depth and the width variances, which are 57 feet for the width and 123 feet variance for the depth. Again, this is, um, a self-created...
May I just interrupt one thing? I don't know that you mentioned the front and rear setbacks associated with this lot?
Okay.
You may want to just read that into...
Alright, we'll do that one. The rear setback being 47 feet is the variance, and the front setback being 28 feet is the variance. Again, all these are not a self-created issue because they've been there for so long. It came that way originally. It's not gonna invite, uh, affect the environment, it's not gonna affect the character of the neighborhood because it's been there. Again, it's been in existence for, um, a long time.
70-plus years.
70-plus years. So again, based on that, uh, I think we should approve lot one. Uh, do I make a motion separate, or do we do it?
You can do them together.
Okay, now we go to lot two. Lot two, we'll, I, I started from the bottom, I'm gonna start from the bottom again. Lot area variance again, um, 13,204 square feet on the variance. Lot depth, 11, 111 feet. Lot width, 29 feet. These are all the variances that we're gonna accept. The side variance is 3.6 feet. The rear variance is 55 feet. The, um, corner street side is 34.6 feet, and the front... The, um, corner street side is thirty-four-point-six feet, and the front is twenty-nine-point-one. Again, um, all the same reasons as lot one, as lot two, it's, it's been there forever.
Is there a second?
Si, aye, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions. All of us continue to be present. The last item that the board needs to consider tonight, everyone should have received the, um, minutes, which were prepared by Michelle for the October second meeting. Did everyone have a chance to review those?
Aye.
Yes, aye.
Alright. So, Mr. Travis is moving to accept the minutes as prepared, I'll second that. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries, seven votes in favor, no opposed, no abstentions, we all continue to be present, and we are adjourned.